We have our friends from Communications, Development Services, PPW, and Planning, Zoning, Fire Marshal, Code Enforcement, and general all-around jack of the trades.
Yeah, you do.
All right.
I'm wearing on stuff.
We need her back.
That's right.
Those long jerseys go from shoulder to shoulder. I can't pronounce it.
Get rapid. Okay, so the first one is going to be our Communications and Information Specialist, Ms. Ely. Thank you for being here.
Happy to be here.
Great.
It's been a lot of years. So my goals for the coming year are pretty consistent with past years. Keeping information flowing, keeping it correct, in fact-based, timely, and transparent. And working with Tony and the PR team. Always getting the content out, choosing the right tools, all in different combinations and frequencies to get information in front of residents and to support departments in their efforts to do that, too. I think I've worked with everybody's departments here. It's good effort. I think over the years, we just keep raising the bar in terms of how consistent our communications are from all departments. We're going to be evolving into a new website in the coming year, and I'll be a big part of that, getting the content together and organized and migrated, and filling in gaps if we find any. We've got the Comprehensive Plan, everything to do with Shadow Pines. There's going to be a lot of committee information to share internally and externally. We've got the Advisory, Energy, and Environmental Advisory Committee. The solar array is zooming along over there. We're going to relaunch the rain garden and brand that whole area for all of its sustainable practices in one place. And that will include, we need to develop more of a home on the website for sustainable content. We won't be waiting for the new website for that. That'll get in and then just get transitioned as when we move in. I support the used book sale every year. It's a fun task. And I just stay on guard, listening for conversations, what's going on, who's calling the town for what, what are departments busy with? Is it an opportunity for Communications? I do not need any additional resources or personnel to do anything that I need to do. The other departments will be relying on me. The big stuff will be the Cobb Plan, Shadow Pines, the website, all the stuff going on over at DPW for sustainability, and the Energy Committee. And, let's see, accomplishments from 2018, supporting all the communications that have needed to pass through the town out to residents. The Shadow Pines was the big thing, all the way from when all the news broke to the public referendum. There was a lot of learning that went on with that, especially with the election. All the very, very specific details and sequence of tasks that had to go down with that, right up through public use. We're prepared for when it's ready. We're prepared with that messaging. And 2020 Cobb Plan, we got that kicked off in Shadow Pines, but that'll carry through. And I worked with the Safety Committee. We rewrote the Safety Annual, the Employee Handbook, supported town budget, and the mixed-use district that we adopted at the end of 2017. And I regularly work with other departments and special projects, and those are the highlights.
Questions, comments, thoughts, ideas?
The only comment that I would have is, do you have any suggestions as to where we might be lacking in terms of the timing of getting communications out? You know, in social media and today, how quickly we need? I know there have been times when I feel like sometimes our residents may not get the message as quickly. So what would be a good way to tackle that in 2019?
Well, I do have thoughts about that. I like to execute communications within a plan and having a tool for every occasion. I like to make sure, at the beginning, we have standards of being fact-based and accurate and timely. And I like to keep the emphasis on being accurate so you're not redoing anything. So social media is moving at its own speed, and I think we have to stay focused on getting the message right. I'd hate to overreact and overrespond and then start pulling things in because once it's out, it's out. But could we have more procedures in place and more policy and more structure for social media? Yes, and I would like to see that.
Some municipalities will have kind of like a daily call for news, meaning, you know, the communications person by noon of each day has sent something out, either via social media or, you know, something, you know, what's the supervisor doing? What's going on? You know, that kind of daily call, daily push of news, which seems to be becoming more the norm, it seems like, in terms of, you know, my following.
Well, I would have to see what the news cycle would be. If we had a news cycle, you've got to support it with resources, and you've got to have something to say. So if it's Tony's going, if it's the routine of Tony or any of the other folks, I don't know how newsworthy you start just making noise. I know I unsubscribe from a lot of things because I don't like all the chatter. But if we had something we wanted to report on every day, there could be a place for it. But if we came up with a policy and a procedure and authorized people and response times and all of that, I think that that would be a big part of it.
Yeah, I think the challenge is that in this day and age, we need to push out the news, as you said, accurately and timely, but then at the same time, have everything on our radar as well to be able to respond to. So it's two-way, and it's very challenging.
And keeping all the audiences, too, because I watch the social stuff as well. But I'm always trying to think of that there's, you know, close to 40,000 people in Penfield. And we have, our demographics are varied. We have, we're more silver than we used to be. People are looking at different tools. And the tools have changed under our feet, too. The Penfield Post used to be the go-to publication. And it's really, and it drove our scheduling, in fact. And that's changed. We know that the column is being followed more. I'd say the column's taken on an even bigger role because we're writing a real-time, we're not writing in the future for a week that passed. It had a lot of constraints. But in short, I think having a social media policy and a little more structure to it would be a great goal for 2019.
Thanks.
Okay. Other questions or comments for Phyllis at this time? All right. Great. Phyllis, thank you, as always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to Mr. Consuela.
Thank you, Tony. Again, we've got several things going on with the mixed-use district. There isn't a day go by we don't have somebody in our office being called about some property in that district and what people kind of can't do with it. So we're spending a lot of time on that. And I'm going to continue to assist the Planning Department in dealing with the individuals who want to learn more about the district and what their rights and responsibilities are within the district as they develop. There are several projects, as you know, already underway with the Planning Board. We have a couple more coming in later this year. So it will be a busy area over the next couple of years. I've been working on Shadow Pines. I intend to assist the town board and staff to determine the most appropriate uses for the former Shadow Pines golf course in the Clark House. We are working on the RFP now. The RFP has actually been sent off to the attorney for his final review, for the final draft. And I expect that we'll be getting comments back from him, at least by Friday, in which case we will get that on to you for review and then get it off to others for final review.
So our goal, our goal is, is that at the February 5th meeting, we'll pass a resolution authorizing that to go out.
Yeah. Continue to assist the commercial property owners to fill empty spaces throughout the town. There are some spaces that are becoming quite visible. Actually, even this week, Linda brought to my attention, which I did not know, that Party City is leaving the Panera Plaza. I did contact the owners of the plaza. They indicated that is true. They tried to negotiate a lease with them for another year, and they would not sign the lease. They also own the property at Ridge Culver Plaza. They signed a one-year lease with them over there, but that's going to be the last lease they sign. They did indicate to us that they do have somebody to replace that tenant, and we'll know about that probably by the end of this month. But things are coming and going, shifting here and there.
There are a lot. Where there are a lot, that's a bonus.
Yeah. So we still have a good occupancy rate within the town. It's still in the 90 percentile. There are some people coming and going for one reason or another. I've had discussions with several realtors about different projects that they're interested in. Most notably recently, somebody who's interested in the Icate and the Terry Williams property. So we'll be working with them to see what they can put together for you to review. Again, the Comprehensive Plan, we're working on that. I'm assisting the Planning Department on the Comprehensive Plan update. We had a meeting last night. Very well, we've got about two more meetings with some education process. And we're going to start getting into the meat and potatoes of the plan to identify what is needed, what needs to be revised. The other thing I want to put in there is an "E", which I haven't done yet, but as late as today, I received some material from the City of Rochester. We've been waiting for it for almost a year now as it relates to the communications ordinance. And that was important to us because, as you remember, last year, we had several people coming in looking to install repeater cell towers within our right-of-ways, and we were concerned about that. That was what was holding up on the table matter on your agenda for tonight's meeting. As a matter of fact, it's on there. One of my goals is to try and get code revisions done sometime in the first quarter of this year to keep the ordinance cleaned up. Identifying any changes in resources. There's not going to be any additional personnel in my area. There hasn't been, and there doesn't need to be. No capital expenses or capital funding will be anticipated for 2019. Our computer needs are basically addressed through Ann Buck's office. She takes care of that for us. And ongoing training. Any training that I receive would probably be localized. It would be through some of the programs that the town puts out through Ann and others. There's no intent to go anywhere outside of the town. Anything that I would do would be during the day. Identifying major projects that involve other departments. Again, working very closely with the Planning Department on every project that they deal with. Communications. Phyllis and I work together on a day-to-day basis. She's been integral in helping me on various projects that I work on. Hopefully, she can say the same thing as well about me. And we do a lot of work together, whether it be for a lot of Tony stuff or just for projects in general. She's been a great aid in terms of crew creating and rewriting certain areas, editing for me as I need to do in different projects. So she's a big help to me. Recreation, I do a lot of work with Recreation Department, particularly Sabrina. She does different programs. She's asking for a lot of the business owners in town so that she can contact them to see if there's support on their part to help her with her programs. And the Building Department, I work with them on a daily basis, particularly with Andy lately, because Andy has, as you know, become a clerk of the zoning board of appeals. That is a new position for him, and I'm trying to help him get through that as each individual new application comes up that he has not had any background with. So that's been a good experience, and I think that's helped him a little bit in getting to where he needs to be with that process. Did have some accomplishments, and I don't have to read through all of them. The most recent accomplishment that I'm really happy, which is the fact that you adopted the Default Mortgages and Vacant Property Ordinance last week. That was very, very helpful to all of us, I think. And I think it's going to be a great benefit to the town to have that in place. And I think we're trying to get that in place probably around March 1st, if I'm not mistaken.
Or sooner. Yes, we can. I signed the contract yesterday. We went back and forth between Pro Champs and Dick and myself. So we signed it, we sent it to them yesterday, and they promised to have it back to us today or tomorrow. So then that then kicks off them starting to take their next step in working with Heidi and her team and starting to crack down on some of those properties.
Okay. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Costello? Concerns, issues, anything along those lines? And we continue to still work on the Ronic Way Bay Coordinating Committee, Andy. That has been...
10 years?
Well, no, it's not. In 1984. I am a charter member.
I was just going to say, he is, and I think...
But you are right. The Harbor Man Plan Update.
And the Harbor Man.
It's gone forever.
Yep.
Hopefully, we're coming to a conclusion.
Hopefully, to a conclusion.
Tony, one question I have. When you talk with the businesses, whether they're in a shopping plaza, like, you know, Party City or Down Panera Plaza or Baytown Plaza, or even standalone restaurants, when they end up going out of business, is there an underlying theme? Is it just for a variety of different reasons?
It is. People don't realize that. It could be something as simple as the landlord and the tenant don't get along with each other, and the landlord feels the tenant's not putting enough into the property and vice versa. And as a result, they said, hey, we're done. And that's happened most recently in Penfield. And I won't relate to where, but it has happened very recently where it was a tenant landlord confrontation that ended it. Other situations, you know, the market drives a lot of it. If you had, you know, Napa Pizza is an example. Napa's a great operation. They do well everywhere for one reason or another. It just did not take off where it is now. Now it's going to be replaced with Ferrari Pizza. Who knows if, you know, if there's a location issue or whatever the situation was. It wasn't the most visible location, but it was a great product. So that certainly wasn't the reason. But they have it for numerous reasons.
Some things, sometimes folks help grow.
That's right. You know, that's the big problem in the Four Corners a lot of times. Over the years, you've had some really great businesses where they were so good, they needed more space, which they couldn't get in the Four Corners, or they needed additional parking area other than what we had there. Lots of times, it's just a function of people getting older and not wanting to do the business anymore and either selling it off to somebody or just closing it because nobody else is interested in taking on the responsibility. So there's a million reasons why businesses come and go. And luckily, we've, you know, we've been very good about having people come to the Four Corners and other areas in the town. You know, and you talk to them, they're very happy where they are. It's, you know, it's not the easiest area either with 36,000 cars going by your door and not a ton of on-street parking down there. But I think the people that have been there showed some good longevity, are pretty happy. I think one of the real positives for that area was the Mott's Lane expansion. Everybody I've talked is very happy that that occurred. And we are, as you know, we are now working to even pick up additional land down there to continue with Westmore. We'll be working on that over the next several months.
Well, and you feel that the occupancy rate is still in that 90%?
It's still in 90%. It's not as high as it's been over the other years. And I don't know if that's because of Amazon or whatever the case may be in terms of how people shop, but it is still very high. Again, realizing that out of the 13,000 parcels we have in this town, only 380 of them are zoned for commercial and industrial use. Now there are multiple uses on those properties, but there are only 380. And that's probably why there's such a high demand for commercial development in town. But we get people coming in all the time asking for new business locations. And as a matter of fact, we were supposed to meet with somebody today who just didn't quite make it, but I'm sure it will be fairly soon. There's an intent fairly quickly here. If you look at a place like Penrefair Plaza, there are some vacancies over there right now, which were kind of glaring, but there is some action taking place right now to fill those spaces with a larger tenant.
Well, and I'm glad that you, you know, that you're stating that the occupancy rate is still in that 90% range because, you know, as you and I have talked before with the supervisor over past years, you know, the retail and restaurant environment here in Penfield also provides a level of local employment for high school students, for college-age kids, and even residents that are just looking to pick up 20, 30 hours and just want to drive somewhere a couple minutes away to work. And so having the vitality of that commercial business and doing fairly well, I consider 90% to be fairly well.
It's good for the size of the community. You know, and it's not like the City of Rochester agrees where you have tons and tons of commercial activity. But what we have is solid. And what you're seeing a lot, too, now is medical and dental. There's a lot of medical going on. And it will be more medical in Penfield. There's a big interest in it. And the other part of it is some of these areas, like Baytown Plaza is expanding. You've got the mixed-use area out there where there will be more commercial development. So there's more opportunity. But again, you've got some vacancies, even at Baytown, that they're trying to fill now. And I think they're being successful in doing that, and they're starting to do some rehab on some properties. You saw McDonald's being done, both at 441 and 250, and also out at Baytown. So you're starting to see some redevelopment of areas. And then the exciting part will be the property down there at Panorama, right behind the plaza, and the property behind the Thermo Fisher. So there's a lot of activity going on. It's just, it takes a long time for commercial development to occur just because of so many moving parts to the process and the financing. And just getting them to be on the same page takes a while. But yeah, we're pretty good.
Safe to say that all the eateries seem to be doing well?
Yeah. You know, there are a few that are here and there, but, you know, it's kind of heartbreaking to see Icate leave because, first of all, he was a great operator. He was actually a good guy in terms of dealing with the community. He did a lot for the community. And hopefully, he'll come back. And I think there's an interest on his part to want to come back if he can get the right spot.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Kaz. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Let us move to Snowflake Tate, who promises that everyone will be able to get to work, school, and otherwise safe. Kaz and Phyllis, thanks again. To and from home and work tomorrow. So, Mr. Tate.
Thank you. A lot of this, you know, as Phyllis mentioned, a lot of this is kind of in line with things we've done the past year or few. We continue to provide the essential services and make sure people can get to and from and schoolwork and their other daily chores. For employee and leadership development, we've had a little bit of turnover due to retirements, due to people leaving and finding other opportunities. Also had kind of within, or some people switching between departments and a little bit of internal movement. So as part of that, we've been trying to kind of look for different leadership and development options for the guys, and especially as they, if they switch from one department to another, get them some training opportunities to kind of better fit how they're being utilized each day. As far as the individual training, you know, doing, as we do the PAs each year, coming up with the kind of top three or sometimes more different training opportunities of what we'd like to see them work on as well as what we'd like to offer them.
I think you're getting ready, you're currently reviewing, to make some promotions into the senior MEO ranks.
Correct. As well as a couple openings for labors within sewer, highway, and facilities. So there may be a little bit of lateral movement amongst guys changing departments as well, if they so choose. As far as communications, we've been continuing the suggestion box. Guys, if they have concerns that they want to bring up with Tony or Tracy, you know, they're kind of anonymous, they're welcome to do such. We review kind of what the general ideas of those concerns to make sure that any concerns are being addressed on a weekly basis, if not more often. As part of that, we're trying to make sure that we're communicating with the guys every morning when we give morning orders, to give them an update where we are budget-wise, what we're looking to do. We've got the boards within the actual break room saying, you know, what jobs are going to be going on each week, who's going to be on them, you know, if and as we know kind of ahead of time. Giving them updates on the weather to make sure that they're prepared for if and what may come. Trying to review any of the financial data, salt usage, where we're at, what grants and other funding opportunities we have to help them along. We're also working to kind of with each of the assigned crews and trying to promote the overall idea of having a plan with all of the guys so that we can walk up to any single person on job site and say, whether it be a truck driver, or a laborer, or an equipment operator, and say, what's the plan? And I can ask every single person on the crew, and they should all give me the same idea or the same, you know, overall plan for that crew. They may have their own individual tasks or duties, and they can relay those, but they know what everyone else is also supposed to be doing so that they can be working a little better together. And I think that's kind of helped eliminate a lot of the guys saying that they don't know what they're doing or standing around waiting to be told what to do. And as part of that, we've introduced new crew daily job briefing sheets that the crew leader, so now no one can say that they don't know who's running the crew or have any issues with that. The crew leader can actually go through, meet with the crew ahead of time to discuss, you know, what's needed, what equipment, what vehicles, what tools, and kind of distribute the workload evenly to all the guys to make sure that everything's grabbed and remembered before they get to a job site and realize that they need to turn back and get something else. So I think that while that's helped, it's helped the guys be a little more involved and feel like they're more than just a body out on the crew. As far as safety and attendance, we're continuing to track the days without lost time. We got up into the almost 300-day mark. Shortly thereafter, we did end up having an incident, and then go back to zero. But, you know, we're working... you know, we're working with the guys, and especially as part of the, you know, the idea of having a plan is to help, you know, them be, be mindful of what everyone else is doing, what they're doing, to try to provoke or prevent any of those accidents, and keep that number growing. Anytime we do have the incidents or accidents, we're reviewing them with the guys. We have both a safety, a safety committee within DPW that myself, Joe, and all of the foremen meet monthly. The guys are welcome to attend if they, you know, have concerns or issues. But we go through, we set up what the monthly safety trainings are going to be, come up with any ideas. If, if they end up hearing anything from the crew members, you know, we all bring it to the table then. We, I'm also part of the Town Safety Committee that we have up here at Town Hall. So, some of the things kind of cross over and carry from one to the other. But, you know, during both of those meetings, we're kind of, we're discussing any of the incidents and issues that we have to figure out how to prevent them and avoid them in the future. For performance objectives, we certainly did a lot, or did a lot last year for the state, county, and the school district, as well as back out at MCC. We'll likely be looking to move out of that and continue that this year. Looking for any opportunities for revenue to help offset some of our costs. Working to maintain all of our compliance for the DPW, whether it's through, you know, MS4 and working with the Engineering Department, our fuel system, to make sure we're in compliance with DCE and EPA. If, you know, by any chance we have any spills, that we're making sure that they, they get taken care of and reported appropriately. I know the past year, we had Department of Labor come down. We also had our own, the town's insurance company come down and do a risk assessment of our property. And that, you know, everything that we do at DPW, as well as the, all the town facilities, the few, the couple minor little things that they both noticed, we took care of. And the inspectors were actually pretty impressed with, with what we've been doing and how we've been operating. We're also looking for grant funding opportunities, working with Mark on some of them. Sometime either later this week, or definitely next week, we'll be wrapping up a TIP grant, Transportation Improvement Program grant, requesting, with it's an 80% matching grant, to do a lot of work with the storm sewers, as well as a mill and fill on Panorama Trail. We had a lot of issues just with the aging infrastructure. So, I think our rough numbers came out that to do what is really needed, it's about $2.5 million for that. So, if they're able to cover 80%, that would be a huge help. Tim Masterton, our Parks Foreman, has also been helping me out. We started looking at, this past year, and are actually, have a meeting set up in the coming months to look at a playground grant, you know, with Jack's Place going in over at Roffus Park. The other playground we have there, we felt that that may be a good, as that's after this summer following year, that would be the next playground up for replacement. We figured, or we're looking into options to help offset the cost, to put a handicap accessible playground in. There's a, we're working with Game Time on a matching grant for that as well.
What's the longevity for playgrounds?
A lot of it's driven by kind of use and wear and tear. We've been putting all of our playgrounds, or shooting for a 15- to 20-year replacement cycle.
So, it's about 15 years?
Uh-huh.
Almost?
Yeah, I think it's 16.
Is that much?
Yeah. 15 or 16. But that would be the, I think this year, we're looking to do Upper Harris Whalen, and then Roffus would be the next one. Tony and I were actually talking earlier about looking at electric vehicle grants, as we're working on our sustainable systems and whatnot. Also working with Mark and the Engineering Department on the Community Development Block Grants, to install sidewalks in different areas of town. And also with Mark, to another grant that we actually, I believe we just got the money, or got the letter of approval for the storm sewer work on Panorama Trail. So, that will help with some of the issues that we've had, you know, to be able to take care of the worst problems while we wait for the TIP grant to.
Are the grants about sidewalks that would, to connect to parks, like through the Shadow Pines area, you know, we're talking about Huntington Meadow? Is there a way that Panorama, Huntington Meadow could connect around? Or maybe some grants out there?
Possibly. A lot of that, I've been kind of waiting to see what the Advisory Committee comes back with, and what their thoughts are, before we put too much effort into, you know.
Still be good to look, look into and see if there's opportunities there.
Yep. As far as personnel, not a whole lot of change. We will be adding one additional facilities, labor, you know, given that we're taking on the additional buildings over at Shadow Pines. We're kind of running light on staffing already with all of the facilities we have and the unfortunate breakdown. So, it would certainly help to have another person around to help take care of some of the maintenance and repairs as needed. For expense and capital funding, there's quite a list, as you can see. Trying to catch up in some of our replacement schedules.
A lot of purchase.
We're, yes. Some of our stuff has gotten behind, and we're definitely feeling the, the pain as far as repairs go. This year, we're looking at, we've placed an order to purchase a new 10-wheel and six-wheeled plow truck. We've got a few pickup trucks for various departments to, you know, replace some of the older ones. We also have a new street sweeper that we've placed an order for, so that will help save us from renting one for a few months of the year, at a pretty substantial cost. There's an athletic field painter, as ours is nearing the, I mean, doesn't owe us anything. It's, we've had it for 20 years, and it's worked great. But it's, the wear and tear is definitely getting to it. Looking at a new confined space hoist for the sewer department, to make sure that we're, our guys are staying safe, if and as we need to work on some of the pump stations. Also looking at a new Bobcat to help out with some of the drainage projects. The ones that we have are, they work, but they're a little undersized, and they've actually, they're getting older, and only one of them is actually tracked to be able to do anything off-road. So, we've got a new one of those coming. Tony and Mark and I are working on coming up with ideas, as we're continuing to kind of outgrow our existing facility, to look at new ideas for a DPW garage, and how and where that might fit, and it could be best utilized. Continuing, as I mentioned, with the playground equipment at Harris Whalen Park, the upper playground. Two HVAC units over at the community center, as well as rebuilding one here, to keep the heat and AC going. Also have a substantial portion of the community center roof being replaced this upcoming year. Continuing to add additional security cameras, and working to phase out our old JSP pumps at our, at the pump station on Five Mile Line. And then, as far as road projects, looking to, we've got, it'll be partially funded by another grant that we got, to mill and pave old Penfield Road, from the bridge all the way up to Gentle's Farm Market. Figured now that the apartments have gone in, and the heavy truck traffic, you know, is, is gone, that we could get in and clean that up with the additional, with all the different, additional cars utilizing that. Continuing to upgrade the energy management system, monitoring all the facilities, as well as the phone system. And this year, we're looking to chip seal approximately 15 miles, possibly a little bit more of various town roads, to prolong their longevity. Even though it kind of started in the Rec Department, I'm working with BILO to help make sure that the boxed athletic field that we got the grant money for gets completed and built this upcoming spring, if not summer at the latest. And as far as training, a lot of them are kind of annual trainings that we've attended in the past. Some of the Cornell Cooperative trainings, continuing to send additional guys, to make sure that they have all the appropriate licenses, that they need to be able to do the work we're doing. You know, any of the computer training programs through New Horizons, making sure that we're offering safety training, especially as part of those monthly DPW trainings, to make sure that everyone that's running the equipment knows how to, is doing it safely, so that not only they don't get injured, but everyone around them. Our security guards and animal control have yearly certifications. The Parks guys, as part of the playgrounds, we have to do monthly safety inspections, and they actually have to become certified playground inspectors for that. So, there's training, and of course, they've got to take. And then the newest one is the DigSafe New York Certified Excavator Program. As of May 4th, I believe, any municipal, actually any one who is digging anything within the right-of-way, it's then why you have to call New York State DigSafe prior to doing anything. But any contractor that's doing the work within the right-of-way and digging, whether it's with an excavator or even a hand shovel, has to be considered a certified excavator through DigSafe. So, that's a, a training, that we're actually having them come to our facility and do a training for all of our guys, to be able to say that every single person is certified to comply with that.
Is there a cost for that?
There is. It's significantly cheaper to have them come and do all of our guys than to send guys individually to the different programs they've got around, around the county. I want to say it's $30 a person if you send people on an individual basis, or 400 for them to come in and do everyone at once.
So, so last year, we reviewed the goals and priorities on the 10th of January. Today's the 9th. Last year, you had a total of 10 days without a lost time. Where are you today?
I believe we are at 92, 93?
Okay.
Oh, that was the last number I saw on the cheat sheet.
It's risky asking that question, Tony.
What's that?
It's risky asking that question.
Yeah, I know. But we talk about it, we talk about it every day. That's part of the, that's part of the, you know, the morning review, and, you know, just to make sure we keep it in front of everybody, keeping everybody safe. Questions for Eric? Concerns?
The, the only question I have is just, can you remind me again the relationship between the town and Penfield Little League? Just to, just to help me out, because I spend most of my spring and summer there, and as you know, I send random emails to you on a regular basis. But I'm also asked by people who are there, sort of, what the responsibility is for the town or the Parks Department, as opposed to what is actually Penfield Little League assets. So, if you could just kind of remind me?
That's a good question.
You mean, like, who does what?
Yeah, I mean, yes. Because I was surprised by the last time I asked the question, so...
It is a combination. So, we cover all, the cost of all of the mowing. Our Parks guys actually go out and groom all the fields. If there's wet spots, they'll put Speedy Dry down, and try to get everything into a usable condition. Oftentimes, Little League will then show up themselves and go through and think that they need to redo it. We've, a lot of the guys that are actually, our Parks guys that are doing maintenance have actually played on those Little League fields, so they, and some of them have played, you know, throughout school, so they know what the fields should look like, how they should be maintained, and at least have that background. They go through, and sometimes Little League does, touches them up, just to say they have. As far as the fencing, we've helped fix some of the fencing spots. Little League themselves is covering the cost, and coordinating the installation of the new fencing they're putting up right now. We take care of, you know, anytime the edges need to be, or the grass, you know, on the infield needs to be edged, we take care of that. You know, we did some regrading out behind the one field this past year. We took care of that for them. We take care of the kind of facilities and the utilities for it. But then, you know, they run the, for the, for Rosies down there, they run that.
Okay. So, let's say- And they, and they cover, and they cover all the utility costs for that. They're responsible for the cost of the lights.
We coordinate it and then send them bills.
So, it comes through us, but they pay us. They cover, you know, all the field dry, or the materials for the fields, you know, to, to add to the fields to, you know, they get-
They supply it. We go out and put it out, make the judgment call as to whether we feel that, you know, the fields are ready and safe to be used, or if they shouldn't.
What about necessary, you know, improvements or upkeep of the dugouts or the benches? And the one that surprised me was the staircase. You know, the, the two staircases there are in, in rough shape, especially the one staircase. And when I went over and spoke with a member of Penfield Little League, you know, I was very quickly dismissed to say that that's a town thing, which surprised me. So, I, I think that, you know, I, there, there is some work that can be done down there, I think, from just an upkeep of some of those. And again, it could, I see, I don't know, I mean, those things could be good Eagle Scout projects, things along those lines. But I'm looking at it as a number of kids running around, and the, some of the public safety with some of the staircases especially. So, I just want to make sure that there is ownership, and that prior to April 1st, or whenever the parade is this year, maybe you or the Parks team and Penfield Little League does a full walk of the site, just to kind of be on the same page. So, when I'm over there this year, or any one of us is over there this year, we have a better idea of, well, this is really who we need to reach out to if there's an emergency or something like that. So, I just, you know, we don't need an answer tonight, but just something that I was thinking about, and just wanted to kind of mention to you.
Who's in the ranks with you, you know, Facilities Committee on Little League?
Well, so, so from a hierarchy standpoint, you know, we get together several times a year with not only Tim Masterton, Eric, Greg Camp, and sometimes some members of Little League Ward, myself. And we sit down, we talk about things. They have a capital plan that they put forth every year. They take care of the dugouts. We don't do anything with the dugouts. We don't do anything with the benches. The stairs were originally Eagle Scout projects. And over time, they have been essentially patched and repaired and what have you. But that is, that is one of those ongoing capital improvements that's going to have to be done. And, you know, one of the things that I'm going to be looking for is assistance from Little League to do that.
Well, I, I would, I would agree. And the stair, that one staircase, like, I mean, that was a major concern of mine this year. And I just, it just seemed as if it was there, and, you know, it was not, it was not, the response was not as quick as I would have liked to try to repair some of those steps on the stairs. And so, I just, again, want to just make sure that everyone is on the same page going into this year of, you know, if there's a problem, you know, to just have it resolved regardless of who it is. I mean, the fields are always in perfect shape, because it's a field. It's the infrastructure around it that residents are confused on whether it's Little League or town or whatever. And so, just some more clarifications.
There is, there is definitely a partnership. I think it's helpful in the spring and the fall, when we get together to meet, so that there is an understanding of who's going to do what, you know, as we go through, so that we're not either something falling through the cracks, or we're committing duplicate efforts and things like that. So-
It may also be helpful getting that the state championships are going to have a three-year run here. three-year run here to even project out beyond the immediate need to say, okay, we're going to have this, you know, extra use of the fields.
And that many more people.
And more people and getting what needs to be done, and then what can we anticipate that might be needing, you know, in year two, year three?
Like the water fountain there. If it's not working and we can't make it work, let's just get rid of it. I mean, that seems like a simple thing, but I mean, I see people there all the time and then there are just people going, well, it doesn't work. Why does it work? And it's just been in a dry for years. And so I, we don't need a water fountain there, but let's just get rid of it then. So just little things like that.
Yeah, make sure everything's working.
Okay, all right. Good. Anything else? All right. Great. Last, but certainly not least, building zoning code enforcement, fire marshal, and everything else.
I must have the longest title.
We're just, we're looking for the right acronym.
Yeah, there you go. All right, going right down the list. I know that I'm probably the one that'll rush right through this. Comprehensive plan pretty much remains the same as it was last year, my first time doing it. We continue to put safety number one in the community, working closely with DPW, trying to do a replacement schedule for some vehicles. Working with the clerk's office, we have a streamlined payment plan that we're working through that we rolled out just a few days ago. We want to roll it out early 2019. Got an email today from Ann Buck, and we're going to continue to move forward with the online billing permit payment plan. We're going to plan engineering to make sure the projects are complete as far as making sure the LLCs are obtained and graded seed and everything is planted as per spec. Community web communications, we've been working with the website to make sure that the information is up to date and factual, so we've been working with them. As far as providing support to the town boards, we continue to do this through our knowledge, our experience. A lot of this comes from Mr. Savagus as he is the most seasoned building inspector, I guess I would say politely, as he is familiar with the history of a lot of these properties and what works and what doesn't work. As far as training, especially for the zoning board members, they have to have a minimum of four hours of training each year, so I continue to forward emails onto them, giving them opportunities to ascertain that training opportunity. And when they go to these training seminars, they come back with information as far as maybe some unique zoning board applications that occurred in other districts so they can work through that. Pursue additional department training. This remains a high priority of mine because I think we need to provide the quality service to the residents and the only, the way that we get to do that is through the experience of training. We want to make sure that our building inspectors stay current on building construction. There's a lot of emails that come across from New York State updating codes. A lot of those are changing, so we want to make sure that they get the proper training to make sure that our residents are safe. And then self-improvement over on the accomplishments, you'll see that there's some training that was ascertained by the clerks. Front desk safety was one of them off the top of my head, and there was a couple other ones, so self-improvement's big too. Looking forward this year to work with ProChamp with the vacant and zombie properties, getting some training and getting that moving forward. As far as personnel, we don't need any at this time because last year, we were able to incorporate a assistant building inspector and an assistant fire marshal, all the same title. So he's been able to help us out. As far as expense, again, working with DPW, replace, with a replacement schedule, trying to figure out which vehicle is up for replacement. We do have in the budget to get one this year. Working my way down, computer technical service assistants. We had a fairly large computer update this year, or last year, which has incorporated a lot of timely access for especially the fire marshal out in the field, because when he goes out into an emergency call, he has the data right in front of him to get the property owner's information and contact name and number, especially with the commercial structures. We have Knox box keys to gain, the fire department can gain access to, but then there's a contact that you want to call to make sure that they can come up and board up the facility correctly. And then with the tablets also, with the BAS update, we've been able to do a lot of the data entry in the field. So instead of them coming back with a whole bunch of data entry, they can do a lot of that in the field. Future training opportunities, that pretty much remains the same as the building inspectors. We all have to have 25 hours of approved service training per year in order to maintain our code enforcement official training certificate. And then building construction principles, there's a couple. At the public safety training facility, there's some building construction opportunities that I can send the, you know, with the training budget, I can send some of the building inspectors to. As far as the fire marshals end of it, it's pretty similar to the building inspectors. Still have to maintain the 25 hours of in-service training as all of us are code enforcement officials. And then there's emergency preparedness classes that have an opportunity to go over at the public safety training facility or even Montreuil Falls down at the New York State Training Academy. The clerks, there's a couple Fred Pryor seminars I'm looking at. One of them is managing the front desk. That is what they, for this year. How to deliver exceptional customer service and the exceptional receptionist. Again, it comes down to a lot of customer service to make sure that we always have a friendly attitude no matter who's at the front counter that may have concerns and may not be presenting it in the most polite way. The disaster plan, Jeff continues, the fire marshal continues to work on the disaster plan. We continue to work on town code changes, and we're working with the planning engineering as far as the design criteria changes. As far as the accomplishments, I'm just going to touch on a few of them. Concerns and complaints is a big one. Everybody has a concern. I don't necessarily like to call them complaints. There was 157 new concerns, 181 of them were resolved. That just means that we have gone back from years before resolving a lot of these. That's why that number is a little different. Property maintenance remains the largest reported concern, and there's a pie graph that kind of goes in, oh, those are permits, sorry. Property maintenance remains the largest concern of citizens, so that's why, again, it's really exciting to hear that ProChamp is going to be working with us to get some of these property maintenance, because a lot of the property maintenance is the vacant structures that have the long grass deteriorating structures, you know, that have to obviously be maintained when the grass is growing and, you know, more of an eyesore for the residents, lowering their assessment values. So we want to make sure that we get that taken care of pretty quick. There was 964 permits applied for, and the building inspectors completed almost 4,000 building construction inspections. That's anywhere from your footing inspections, damp proof, framing, final inspections. That's up 89% from 2017. Again, I mentioned, we hired an additional building inspector slash assistant, assistant fire marshal. We completed 300 annual safety inspections. Those are the commercial structures where the fire marshal goes out and inspects the commercial structures for their safety inspections. Those are usually annual or every three years depending on the structure. We issued 932 certificate of occupancy and/or certificate of compliances. We have the two tablets that were purchased last year. They're working out well, as I said. And with the tablets, we've been able to save a lot of paper and ink because the fire marshal is using a lot of that tablet. The building inspectors all maintained their 25 hours in-service training, and staff has represented billing department in numerous meetings such as the Penfield Town Board. They continue to go over to West Webster Fire Council, Penfield Fire Council, Finger Lakes Billing Association. Inspector Savagus is, I think he's the treasurer for this LaBouche. And then Fire Marshal David just got appointed this year to be the prince, president of the Monroe County Fire Marshal Association. That's it.
Okay. Questions for Heidi?
I'm really impressed by the increase from, increase in inspections. I mean, I think most of our residents have no idea how many inspections are done by your department.
Right.
And I also think it's great. I think that, for me, I don't recall seeing in the past the emphasis on future training so much for the clerks, which I think is really good.
Thank you.
The customer service portion, I think, is, it's great that you highlighted that and have that as one of your priorities.
Thank you.
I think two or three things that I would just mention, and Heidi may have hit them, but I think just to underscore is very important. Heidi's got back. We had a number of permits that were outstanding and were completed. Either the final CVO was not received, inspections were not done, and what have you, and she's done a great job of going through and getting those cleaned up, which I think is a big help. A number of the complaints, there were some things that were outstanding, and she and her team have worked very hard to get, get that taken care of. And then I think personal training has been a very high priority, priority for not only herself, but the whole team. And as you mentioned, Paul, for the clerks, I mean, it's not often that you hear where, you know, the clerks are being given that extra support and assistance, customer service, you know, exceptional receptionist, those types of things. So I think that's been very important. And I think I've seen, you know, certainly a great improvement of that, you know, on the, on the building department side, so.
Thank you. Great job.
Okay. Other questions for Heidi? All right. Very good. Heidi, thank you very much. We'll take maybe just about a two-minute recess to switch from goals and priorities, and then we'll get right into our work session. So thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
We're going to get started, so we'll officially call the January 9th, 2019 work session to order. Excuse me. And I'll let, we'll let the minutes reflect at all the board members who are here, as well as at least one member of staff and some distinguished audience as well. I would first like to report that from 6:00 to 7:00 this evening, we went over goals and priorities for DPW building, fire marshal zoning, development services, and communications. Our next opportunity to pick up with that will be next Wednesday, and we'll have recreation, finance, personnel, and the assessor. Before I get further into the agenda, I would just like to say that under action items, special permit at 2567 Brown Croft Boulevard, that's Murray Wynn and Jim Costello, the staff person to represent. That item will be continued tabled. That will not be discussed this evening. That will next be taking, taken up at our second meeting of the month. So again, if anyone's here for 2567 Brown Croft Boulevard, that is going to remain tabled and not discussed this evening. We will next go into approval of the minutes. We have the December 12th, 2018 minutes before us, and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
They're moved, and seconded, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'd ask for roll call. Please, those, excuse me, for those, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Carries, and their minutes are approved. We will, the monthly reports are starting to, to come in, and most of them have been received. The rest of them should be in our electronic mailboxes by week's end. We have no public hearings this evening. We have no guests this evening. Again, I'll just report that action item number one, special permit for 2567 Brown Croft Boulevard, will remain tabled and not discussed this evening. That brings us to action item B, review of the website proposals. Before I turn it over to Dave, I know Dave has sent some material out to all the board members so that we have that. And with that, David, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Does anybody need a copy of what I said?
I'm kind of close.
Yep. So we're not looking at you, that's where I'm looking.
Okay, very good. So before I get in too deep into this, I just want to know how much detail you would like to have, because I could get very detailed for you, or keep this kind of on a high-end, 2,000-foot view for you.
High-end is works for me.
I say summary and actually, and any recommendation that you may have.
Okay, so in the email, I did give you a recommendation, but I will just take a minute and maybe talk about the process that we went through to get to that recommendation. So prior to doing the RFP, we did recognize the fact that we were going to go forward and to do a RFP to recognize, to update the website for its services that it renders. As part of that process, to learn what we wanted to put within the RFP, we did go out and call back those companies that have done cold calling with us and contacting us for the last two years, and give them an opportunity to kind of present what they have, told them what we're thinking about going forward, what should we be looking for in a new website. So as that process went on, we did have an opportunity to get a demonstration and talk with three companies in advance of the RFP. Post-RFP, we did receive seven vendors that did respond to that. And then from that standpoint, the web committee got together to review those submittals. And then from that standpoint, we.
We hear what it says.
Nobody likes the little phones?
Well.
That's okay. Not a problem. I understand. I feel the same way. Something tangible is always nice. So as part of that process, the web team went through and made a recommendation to look at three companies. And those three companies that we started off with to start with the review process was Revise, ECOG Strategies, and Jesse James Creative, Inc. Through that process, we did go through and listen to what they had to present following that, those three vendors, and reviewing our notes, we decided to expand to go one more. So we then went to E Solutions Group. So from that, I will get into this matrix and just kind of briefly go through it so you can kind of understand what we were looking at. This is a summary. This is not everything that we looked at, but I was trying to keep this on a very high end and try to simplify the language and not get tangled up in the weeds with too much technical information on you. So out of the company, from the interviews, all four in front of you have been interviewed, providing you an aspect to where they're located, years involved in doing websites. We see a range there from 20-plus years to five years. Website focus, we wanted to make sure that when we're looking at a company, that they're really geared specifically for government use. Understanding that this process is going to be consolidating four websites into one. And when we look at library as well as the rec side of things, they're really more of a marketing site. They're not about government services and communications. They're going to be more about a marketing. So we had to make sure that we kept that in mind through this process. Sites completed, we really wanted to find who was successful in their background of completing sites. The size of the company, how many staff members, and also how they run their help desk. What we did find interesting is through the help desk, as you can see, there's from phone, email. But what stood out to us very interesting about Revise was that Revise, when you call the help desk, you're going to get a site developer. They don't use just technicians. You actually have somebody that knows the code on the other end of the phone. Open source code, this is something that we were very concerned. Open source code, this is something that we were very concerned about, because out of some of the submissions, they're recommending to use like Drupal, Drupal, some will call it, some of these open source codes. And the problem that we recognized through doing preliminary interviews was that anything with open source code could become an issue for us down the road due to the fact that if that open source code was to change, it means retooling and resetting the entire website, and we did not want to get into doing that. Mobile app integration. So as part of this, one vendor told us they're anti-apps completely. They don't want to deal with mobile apps because we have a website that can be viewed on the web, on the app, or on your mobile device. So from that standpoint, they didn't want to get into that. An app, at this time, really becomes an important communication tool, given the fact that apps allow us to push information directly to a device and create an alert. So we did want to go down and look at who can support us in that process. Independent site hosting capable. So in certain circumstances, some vendors are absolutely, no, you have to host with us. And we did not like that idea, given the fact that if the company was to go under or it was to be bought out, we're going to be left vulnerable. And we really wanted to be sure that whatever we developed, if something was to happen, that we could then move the site and host it independently, and that we can continue to operate and then research finding a new vendor to work with us. So the whole aspect of everything is based on a content management system for content, and then to what company can support us and continues to maintain their content management system. Revice is doing that on a quarterly basis. Others is if we recognize a problem or want an upgrade, it's going to just continue to cost us more. Subsite and microsite support. So what that is, is when we look at the process of going forward, we're going to be developing Penfield.org. And then that's going to become the core. Any other site is going to be a subsite or a microsite off of that particular site. So we wanted to be sure that we could expand on that in the future, and that would not limit us. Some companies were presenting it as a licensing issue to license additional, which would have limited us and also added costs down the road. Site pages, obviously, we wanted to make sure that we could have as many pages as we want. Responsive web design, that's kind of a no-brainer. We want to make sure it can manage tablets as well as mobile devices. Centralized CMS, content management system to be centralized. Some proposals were to have many CMSs. And this gets into multi-key entry. And a big goal for us was to do single-key entry. If we put the information in to the system, that information needs to be accessible by all the sites that are being supported, regardless if it's library or recreation, that if we have an emergency alert, if we're doing headline news, we want that to be cross-platformed. Storage, unrestricted obviously is a better aspect than having limitations for storage. Site code ownership at the end, we will own the code. That's important for us. Extent, extranet enabled. So an extranet is the fact of you as an end user, you're coming into the website from home, you're the end user. But we can also have documents and pages that would allow you to have secure logins to access information that was to be in a controlled distribution. Excuse me. Internet staff. The internet is a staff-only site. That's obviously for us to communicate with amongst staff members, have projects, dialogue, et cetera. WWW consortium, the W3C qualifications in ADA. We want to make sure we're compliant on all those. And then we're looking at the trading side of things. How is each vendor potentially proposing the opportunity for employees to be trained? So onsite, working with us here is a much more friendly environment to handle information sharing and training. Refreshers, and then also what kind of online support do they have for ongoing communications for new and upcoming, or if we get new staff, how can we get them trained? Key admin tools, forms. Pretty much every website will allow you to do a form, but the interesting thing with Revice is that it allows us to track the workflow. So when something comes in, that really allows us to drill down and build a new workflow. So this is going to help us with the building department, planning, zoning, for applications, et cetera. Staff access by role by department. This is also a table stake item, but this is important when we're looking at the new site, that each of the departments will be able to update their information on their own, and that we have control features in place. So granular security controls, that again, also is to the staff members, so that way we can drill down and really control what they can do, all the ways down to, say, bolding the text, to catalyzing what they can and cannot have access to do. And then content update alert. So as part of the new site, when some information is updated on the website, what we want that to be able to be done is that as a resident, if you have subscribed to the content, and we'll use the example of the planning department, if planning makes a change, you will get a notification that there is new information now available, and that what that page is, so you can go look at that. Continuing on with admin tools, e-news system. So e-news is an interesting bear to tackle here with websites. Many of the websites have some type of system available, but really what the recommendation that we heard from each of the vendors was, you can do a blast of some sort, but really to be effective with e-news, you may want to look at something like MailChimp or some other third-party that is really specializing in that area.
How's that relate to, like, Tony's column?
So we haven't done an e-news in a very long time, and I would say that that is a great resource going forward to do that. The other way with the e-news system is that we can then take and gather all new information that has been added and build it so that way, calendar of events, we want to have a five-day outlook or a seven-day outlook, we want to look at the blog posts, we want to look at photographs, that it would automatically build that information and pull those resources in. So Tony's column, we've had some brief discussions about maybe revisiting how that information is going to be shared going forward because of the new tools that will become available. But that would be consolidated and then be able to be disseminated at the end of the week or whenever we would like to do that.
Does it go out as a news email? Or is it...
It would be an email for those who, well, social media obviously is going to be an important role here, and I have my personal opinion on the social media side, but the biggest one is that we cannot be posting information to social media independent of the website. It has to be present at the website. So the goal with this process is that all information will go to the websites, regardless of department. From there, if that content, news category, wherever they're posting it, is to be sent to social media, Facebook, Twitter, whatever that is, it will automatically do that.
Right.
That's the goal going forward, that individuals will not have to log into Facebook, they will put their information in on the website, and it will be transmitted outward.
Great.
Emergency notifications, I think that's kind of self-explanatory, but through text messaging, through the app push, as well as also through the banners, et cetera, across the multiple pages. A staff audit trail that's important for us as admins to really see who has made changes, when they made it, and what did they change. You know, if they changed one word in a paragraph, it's going to call it out so we can drill back through the archive and find, so if somebody has made a mistake in that, we can also roll back. Content scheduling, this is one that's really got a lot of empowerment for us in the aspect of when we look at events and activities that are happening within our community, that pages will be able to turn on at a specific time. The content will roll over on the page, so we'll use Independence Day as an example. We get through 2019's Independence Day. Obviously, come July 3rd, 4th, you know, whenever our event is the following of that event, it would automatically change the page over to 2020's information for us. So kind of keeping our hands off, keeping the site fresh and consistent. Content rollback and archiving, kind of touched on that already, the fact that we can roll back to previous information. Link checker, this is probably one of the biggest challenges we have with existing sites, is the fact that a link to a document or to another site is inserted into a column, into a blog post, or in some news information, and then the supporting information has been moved. Where did the links go? What pages have it? Now we've got a bunch of 404 errors. The link checker will not allow us to delete a document if it's linked somewhere else, which is really empowering us, and allows us also, if we're going to update the document, we can change globally across the site all the various links simultaneously. Staff directory, something that we have not done in the past, we'll be able to do that going forward. And then from that standpoint, if somebody's on a committee in one particular area and they join a committee somewhere else in another department, we can move that information over. Access to the site code, this is one that we really wanted to say, we have full control of this, and we will have full control of the code that is presented. Citizens' communication tools. Documents, obviously, the websites are filled with thousands of documents, which is unique, with Revice, that none of the other vendors brought forth this tool, is that Word or text to PDF inside the system. So no longer does somebody need to have Acrobat, PDF Creator on their computer, they can upload the Word document, and we can convert it within the system. FAQs, kind of table stakes, job postings. Job postings with workflow really becomes an opportunity where we can collect information, and then HR department will be able to categorize that by their interest and be able to work back and communicate directly back to those individuals through the site. Interactive maps, this is kind of what BAS was trying to do for us with some stuff, but the aspect is that somebody can, well, with their phone, excuse me, take a picture of a pothole, he'll record its GPS coordinates, they'll be able to upload that. That will come in and create an interactive map for a DPW department to see what people have reported on, as well as allow them to then respond to those individuals and track it and build a reporting schedule to their teams to go out and address those issues. Additionally, for projects under review, so when we look at planning, zoning, and town board for those properties that are in front of the town or being reviewed for some reason, we will have that information also through a calendar, excuse me, the calendar as well as the map, where you can go through and see where all those properties are that have some type of application in front of them. The calendar, obviously, that's a table stake item. Business directory is something that we asked for in this process, given the fact that we recognize that we do have the Penfield Business Chamber, but we also have many other business districts that may participate or not participate in the chamber, in addition to those who are home-based occupations, and looking to be able to build something for economic development and be able to share with our residents as far as what's going on in our community and where you can possibly find a resource for a need within Penfield. Photo gallery, again, table stake item. Survey tools, sharing tools through social media, I've already kind of touched on that. Sliding feature bar, this is an area that on the right or left-hand side of the page as we develop it, we will be able to kind of highlight key points to a department that will move with them as they navigate through the various pages. So it will become dynamic and be able to stay with them as they are looking at various information. Translator, we do have people who are bilingual within our community, so this is an important tool that we want to make sure we had support for. Citizens' engagement center apps. So this really gets into what can a resident come in and request, how can they have tools to utilize things? So public service request, I've touched on that a little bit with DPW, but that will also get into the building department for applications, planning, and zoning as well. Citizens Request Center, so this is where individuals come in and ask questions. We can have an open dialogue with them. We could take it offline, we could keep it online. If we want to make those dialogues public, we could do so. Public records tracking, this would be for the foils in the clerk's office. This is a kind of an advancement to what we've currently done, where people can submit the information. This will give them an actual ID number. They'll be able to respond to the individual. Once that information has been made available, then they can choose to make that information permanently available within the website itself. Parks reservation, so as part of this process, we were looking at all of our third-party portals that we utilize, being GIS, WebTrack for Recreation, the ECODE 360. Is there a company that could kind of consolidate that for us? And at this point, there's not. But with the recreation aspect, this tool would allow, excuse me, shelters and like meeting room facilities, but not for programs. Online bill pay, that will allow us to do things such as pay for your taxes, pay for your building permit. If you've got any other fees that are based on dogs, et cetera, we could put, build a process in to accept a payment online. Site design, so as part of the site design, we really wanted to have full control to ensure that we are designing something that meets our needs, and we're not going to be pigeonholed into somebody else's town. Excuse me. The proposed sites, how did they address the project? Were they going to suggest that we do independent sites or combined? Six of the seven came back with combined. The content, we really wanted to have an aspect to review that content and our needs, and not to be someone that's going to say that it's all up to us to go forward. So with the content, it's not going to be a copy and paste of information, it really is going to be a ground-up rebuild. Site needs, questionnaires, and focus groups, we're looking at both staff and public, so we really want to have the input of all departments, all staff, and our residents as far as what the site's going to look like and how it's going to operate going forward. So at the end of the project, what happens after three or four years? So after three or four years, as part of Revice's proposal, is they basically come back and we do this process over again, and that is included to ensure that we are meeting our current needs, and that we don't have something that is a fad that has faded off from some type of menu navigation, that we have introduced whatever that new design, the new features that are available into it. Timeframe, 16 to 21 weeks is estimated by Revice. I don't think that is realistic in the end, given the magnitude. I think we're probably looking at more like 26 to possibly 30, but that's on the long side, so I've put it somewhere in between. If I was to have a personal goal, I would love to have it completed before Independence Day, given that's our single most busiest day of visitors to the site. Estimation of costs for the project, and I'm using the term estimation here, even though that is what the number they provided, given the fact that what we're really looking at is our third-party special integrations that may have to happen with our various portals. Revice will work with us to create the style sheets, rules, and procedures for fonts, et cetera, with our third-party portals. But we have to go out to them and also present that information to them. And then from that standpoint, there may be a cost for that said company to make a modification, or we may have to make a tweak to what we already know from what we're developing as a possible add-on. So I want to be looking at it and saying, okay, we've got a hard number here from the project side, but at the bottom, there are third-party special integration. We're looking at what is the average going rate between development and design from an hourly standpoint that we could be presented with. And obviously, if it's something that the supervisor and I was to find that kind of fell in and was reasonable, we could move ahead. But if something was, yeah, that sounds like a good idea, but it's going to be absorbent, maybe we should come back and have the conversation then with you as a whole to discuss if that's something we want to move on or not. I apologize, trying to get over this thing. So the remaining of the information that was in the packet was really from Revice about the phase process. It gives you some information in detail about the tools. The email I sent you, I did provide you additional links to some sample sites that you could look at if you haven't done so. You could take a look at, kind of get a sense of... look at if you haven't done so, you could take a look at, kind of get a sense of the But if you have questions, I'd be happy to go through this if you would like, or try to answer whatever you got.
I like their samples, different websites. So what happens? It goes on, or they want to continue on, they want to start the process over, is that part of the contract?
Yes, it's included.
And if you're not happy with them after three years?
We choose to go somewhere else?
Yeah.
We don't have to stay with them at all.
Yeah.
There is no contract that's going to hold us to them, it's to get us through the design process and it's going to include hosting. So all of that is included in that first rate. The hosting and maintenance will be kicking in year two, so from that standpoint, that's when that fee's going to kick in. The current product that we have, Soho Launch, that we've been utilizing for well over 10 years now, probably closer to 13, we paid a hundred bucks for the software, and I've rewritten the code myself numerous times. We've paid a $3,000 hosting fee to a local hosting company, we've gotten our money's worth out of that time and overtime over, I think. It's done us well, but I think it's time to definitely move on. So for the cost of this-
You don't ask to tell you just go to Best Buy and buy the next-
You prefer not to go that route. I'll keep my comments to myself on that one. No, I would hope-
Tony wanted to do that, but we told him.
Really? I knew he was in for it.
My question Dave, real quick, is, looks like Revise was also the low bidder-
Yes.
-of the four. Do you have any concern with that price for what they are proposing to do, which, you know, based on my reading, I did read it a little bit this afternoon when you sent it over, but then just taking another look at it here, you know, for all intents purposes, they are agreeing to pretty much everything you've listed that you want them to do or that you have a concern about. You know, and so I guess my question in general is, do you think that that price is adequate? Or could we find ourselves in a situation halfway through the development where they're coming back with add-ons and, well, you know, we didn't know we were going to get into this and next thing you know, the $38,700 becomes $68,700.
Good question.
And I realize, and it's a set-up question, I realize you never know what-
No, and I got my answer for it. I do have an answer for it, because out of all of these, I'll just, I'm going to thumb through these quickly, the one that stood out to us in the beginning was Jesse James, they're a marketing company. They took the time to go through our existing website and tear it to shreds, and I commend them for it, because they really found flaws. They've only been in the business of doing websites, though, for five years, and it really stood out to us as being a concern. And part of the process also, when we were looking at the content management systems of each of these companies, was not just the fact of what it could do, for me, I can adapt to just about any interface, but when we're talking about getting staff involved, that backend interface also needs to be friendly, so that way staff is going to want to go in and make the changes. Because if they feel it's cumbersome, they're not going to do it, and that's a lose. So price point here, there was a lot of TBDs to be determined-
Yeah.
-and that really left us with a lot of questions of saying, we couldn't go down that road. E-GOV strategies, similar fashion, there was just too many open-ended areas here that really left us with questions, that they weren't sure, they wanted to get through the process and get it started, so we had concern on that front. One of their strong suits, though, was e-commerce, for what they do for bill pay is a really incredible system, but for us, given how our taxes are paid today in the various departments and systems, we couldn't leverage that entirely, so that kind of took us down out of that. These other two, just based on their presentation and what they were addressing, were not hitting all our marks, and we had chose not to go with InfoGenie to discuss or Planetaria. Civic Plus is not on this list, but they were one of the ones we started with. They answered no questions to the RFP, and everything is an upsell. Every single part of it was going to be an add-on or going-
A la carte.
A la carte. So they had a service for recreation that we could have taken advantage of, but it just left us with too many questions, so that we could never drill down a number to really say what the project was going to cost. So the big one here, eSolutions Group, was the fourth one in when we started reviewing these, and the one that stood out to us was, what are we missing? For $83,000, this company's got to do something, we have to have missed something. And they, their tools and what they were leveraging was equal to what we had seen that these others could do, but they also had areas of, we're going to have to drill into that. So to get back to your question and answer that for you, is that Revise was the one that came back to us and said, this is what it's going to cost us to do this project. If there is something that comes up, we'll address it, and we have already given you a price and we're going to move forward on that and honoring it. If it's something extremely absorbent, because, you know, we get into a third-party portal, we may have to readdress it. So that, really, at the end of the day, we felt very comfortable with where their heads were and how they were presenting the information, how they answered the RFP and what they had presented for a process to go through, and we felt very comfortable with that. A question that Tony had asked me in preparation of tonight was, what happens three years down the road, four years down the road, in the aspect of, do we have to go through this process again? And the answer is, we don't have to, but if we continue to go with Revise, they're going to work with us, they're going to do that as part of that package. What's the life expectancy of the new site? I think the ongoing trend going forward is that probably every three to four years, we're going to look at redesigning the site, and that's just not from the aspect of, we have more content, but how devices work, how menus are going to be used, how icons look and feel, how those communications systems work, there's going to be a need to continue to move forward, and we need to do that in steps. And I think that three to four-year window kind of is more realistic. If we were to continue with Revise going forward beyond, say, the six to eight-year mark, the content management systems there, we're talking about retooling, we're not talking about changing information, but we'd still do an evaluation of information. So the second time through, that's included, so when the example is when we get to the third, that's a new price point. So that's, when we get to that six to eight-year mark and we're looking at going through this for the third time, we'll be revisiting additional feet. Now, it won't be as significant, because so much of that content would already be in the system, so that's something just to keep in mind. But we felt for what we're dealing with and what they're presenting, it's a nice compromise, it's going to advance us, we recognize that for what we've been doing, for what we have, we're much further down the road than many other towns were before we even got into this process, because a lot of those tools, we have built ourselves going through this. So it was kind of exciting to see that side of it, that we weren't blown out of the water by something of like, oh gosh, I can't believe we could do that.
A couple of other things, Andy, you know, you take a look at the years that they've been in business, 20-plus, you take a look at the number of sites that they've worked on, completed, I mean, as compared to the others, I mean, they're 10x, you know, the number of employees, it's not a group of five or six sitting around, I mean, they've got, they've got some, they've got a deep bench, so those are a couple of the other things, as, you know, as Dave and I spoke, that really, you know, stands out as well.
One of our things, one of my things, I challenge each of my staff to do, is each one of these companies that we're looking at, we call them on the weekend, we call them in the night, we call them in the daytime, we call the help lines, we wanted to see how they were going to respond and how soon they could get back to us and how they handled the phone call, how they handled emails. That was part of our testing phase. Revise got back to us in what we considered a reasonable, if not an outstanding timeframe. Others, you know, we waited a week and a half before we got a call back, so, you know, we did our due diligence to go through and try to vet them out the best that we could to ensure that we're going to get the best we can. It may not be everything that we all want, because it's, there's limitations, but if we were to sit here and say, we wanted to go from the ground up and create our own content management system, and we want to pull all those third-party portals in and redesign it, it's a monumental task and as well, it's going to be very expensive to do. So I think this really meets our needs today, gives us something to grow on. The challenge with our portals is really to have a better understanding to what they're doing, that's being managed through Ann, it's Coffer, her window right now. So as we continue to go forward, we need to have some communications there and synergy that if another department's coming up with a portal, there's got to be some brakes hit, we've got to test that, we've got to make sure that it's going to be compliant and it's going to work. And that one vendor, just because they could do something, may not be the best solution, given the fact that it's just not going to play nice, so.
How do you do training and so on with this company? Do like go-to meeting or something?
No, they're going to come here.
They would?
They're going to come here, and it's kind of outlined here, but it's a train-the-trainer kind of scenario. You're going to come in and for the admin side, we're going to be the first round going through and doing the heavy load, and then we'll get into also then working with the various departments, so each of the departments will receive training.
Is that within the cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and then ongoing training and support can happen at any time online, and there's a number of resources on their website where employees who have a need for refresher, they can go out and look at that information and watch videos and see how that happens.
Webinars or something?
Yeah, but not to forget the fact that you're going to have four of us in the basement that are very-
Downstairs.
Thank you. We're going to be very acute to what the system does and how it works, and if there's a situation with it, we can handle it. As far as people changing content on their pages, they'll go out, they'll change their content in the beginning, we'll get notified that they made a change, we'll go review it, make sure that it's working, it's correct, before we authorize those changes to actually go and play. So we can have a number of different tiers and controls in place of how they will work. As far as the content goes, right now, our challenge is getting rid of what we don't need to clean this process up as much as we can. We're probably around 8,000 documents right now, so we've got some work cut out for us in that arena. The library, the site that they have right now that is hosted with the Monroe County Library System is coming offline before this project would be completed, so in the next three months, I am building them a temporary site that's going to hold them until this project is completed.
Dave, I'm impressed by the level of work you and your team did to actually not only just prepare the RFP, review the RFPs, but also, like you said, I mean, just testing the response of parties, so I want to commend you for that. Just two questions, one, I don't think you mentioned it, but how does it, how does it interact with like the video, like PC TV and live broadcasts from either a mobile application or sitting at home? I mean, I just-
Yeah, so for what we've developed today, that's going to just kind of plug in, so we use Vimeo, YouTube, our own content distribution system through Telview, and then Hedy Roku, and we're working on the Apple TV app as well. There's a reason why we're using all these different formats, because Vimeo, now that it's back online, we got through those struggles, is supporting us strictly now going forward, only for government content. Their distribution of their content and how they use their system for disseminating it is very easy to plug into other areas. YouTube is going to be utilized for all the community events and activities, they'll still have the meetings on it, but that one comes with a lot of banners, advertising and other things, so we're trying to stay away from that, but when we talk about recreation programs, that's really where YouTube is going to be at strength over there, so we're going to tie both of those kind of back into the system, so it'll be accessible as a menu item to get to VOD, Video On Demand. For the live stream, that's going to be coming through the Telview system, and that's going to be coming directly out of here to a reflector site, which is basically a server that takes one feed in and then makes it available to many. So we have to use a third-party, otherwise we do not have enough bandwidth within the building to have, you know, 150 simultaneous streams coming out of here to service people, so we have to use these reflector sites. So that will also be, much like it is today, an iframe that's in there that people can come in and see, and then continue with the process of using some type of automation to the front page, where as activities and events are happening, that that will migrate to the front during the event and then go back down. But in the app itself, our goal is to have a menu button right in the app where you can call it up and look at it.
Okay. And then I assume that as part of the backend information, that you and your team will be able to, I mean, all the analytics of-
Yep.
Okay, all right, so I assumed as much.
Analytics-
How dare you ask that?
The analytical data-
Probably is, actually, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I did have to ask that.
The analytical data, and to go through and register the site and ensure that we are getting a higher ranking, Revise is going to work with us on that. We have our current analytical accounts in our data tables for all the sites, as well as all the video. They're going to research that to see what pages, what content, how that works.
Does it do heat mapping and things along those lines?
Google Analytics can do that.
Okay, all right.
So we can look at it on a daily, an hourly, and we frequently, and that drives a lot of our decision-making, I mean, a lot of departments, you and yourselves, probably say, why isn't this here? Why is that link there? It may be important to you, but the trend is, there are other areas that are much more important. We use the analytical data to drive the decision-making, not emotional decisions.
Sure.
We have to take the emotion out of this and use real numbers and look at things to be successful. If we're not doing that, we're not doing our jobs properly.
Yeah, and as Tony mentioned, I mean, I certainly with the number of sites and the focus on the websites, years in service, I mean, I think Revise, I haven't heard anything, you know, negative about them tonight, and I don't see a reason why we wouldn't want to pursue them. I also like the idea that, you know, in three to four years, they come back and kind of just work with you again to make sure it's meeting our needs, and so one of the, one of the questions I had about that is, like, the intuitiveness of the website, and I, the more and more like commercial sites, like service, like airlines or, you know, maybe online shopping or something, like, if you go to the site, either an online assistant will show up or it will prompt you to, do you have a question? And if you respond, then it will sort of trigger, you know, someone, let's say at the town hall, to then interact, I mean, if someone's stuck on where do they go for pool permit or something.
Right.
Is, maybe not in the first iteration, is that something that you thought about? Or is that something that could actually be built into this?
We could do it today, we could actually do it today, and I've stayed away from that feature-
Yeah.
...because social media, for my team, we do 365, 24/7-
Yeah.
...with responding to residents on those issues alone today. To have an, if you will, the virtual receptionist, it goes back to saying, do we have a receptionist?
Right.
We got away from that. So we're using the empowerment of the tools, the search functions to get there. Obviously, if somebody has a concern they can't find something, most of the time, what's happening is they're calling the building department, I can't find this. So training our staff how to help residents get through it is going to be an important element. Today, it takes a little bit more, I recognize that, but I think coming down the road in the future, what you're going to see is a search function that as you start putting in your terms, it's going to start listing a whole bunch of things, it's confining, so we'll use pool. If I start saying swimming, you know, anything that's with swimming is all of a sudden starting to come up, so that could be a community pool, that could be, you know, do we have some swimming pools?
Some swimming pools.
Exactly, so that stuff's going to start coming up. So they're going to start seeing keywords coming into that, so they can help drill them to that content.
Excellent.
So I'm impressed on that, Ed.
Sure.
To add on to, as far as our testing phase, we went up and we called, so when we decided that, yep, Revise is the one we're making the recommendation on, I've had the opportunity to talk to five municipalities that are currently using them, not within their recommendations. What they gave me as referrals, I did not call the referrals, I sought out others to call, and I really wanted to know, would you use them again? What hasn't worked for you and what, you know, should I be scared of going forward? And from the individuals, I didn't get any negative. There was a few times with some communication breakdown between the two parties, but that was after the development, when they needed a glitch fixed, it wasn't a high priority or they had a wishlist item, but- But they said they've been very responsive, that they come in and they do what they say they're going to do.
All right.
Sounds great. This is very thorough.
I would say so. If we're looking for a motion tonight, I'd be happy to make the motion that we move forward with Revise.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe definitely is a long overdue, long overdue leap ahead for middle-of-year communications for transparency, accessibility.
Lot of good things to come. All I can say is give us a little time because we're going to have our work cut out for us.
30 weeks.
I knew tomorrow you should be outside.
As part of that, though, you yourselves are going to be part of the collection of information. And the kind of what I've been dripping out with other staff is, I want you to look at other sites and not government sites. I mean, if you like Amazon, great. You like Google, you like that. Fine. Whatever site you go to and kind of like that format of how it works, make note of that because we're going to ask why you like those sites and what are the tools in there that you like? And that's going to help develop this next site. So just keep that in mind.
I think Google's the best.
Well, I think it's just, I'm sorry. I think it's worth mentioning that, you know, this initiative, and Dave, you deserve a lot of credit for it and so does the supervisor, is just a continuation of what the town's been doing, you know, in the interest of providing residents with up-to-date information and materials and happenings that go on in the town. You know, as you and I have talked before, Dave, and we've mentioned, you know, the town and its website has been acknowledged in Sunshine Week with the local newspaper for transparency, accessibility of information, open government, way beyond what other towns and other municipalities do in Monroe County. And you can just simply look at some of the other village, town, school district websites and see that ours is already superior. And this is just going to make it better. More information and with the intent of being user-friendly too. So I think it is a continuation in the right direction in our efforts to provide residents of Penfield information that they may desire in accessibility to their local government that's not offered in other municipalities throughout Monroe County. And it's been acknowledged by a third-party entity that reviews this kind of stuff. So thanks to both of you.
And I think that it sounds as if, you know, you've taken a look at this to such a degree that all of our departments will buy into this. And I think it's important that we have, as you said, user-friendly, having it be something that, a platform that enables whatever information they want to get out, you know, that it's across the, across departmental, accessible from everything from DPW to, I can envision the courts. A lot of improvements that can be made from the court standpoint and giving people information about calendars and things like that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. The very unique thing is when you think of our department, we touch every department.
Yeah, absolutely. Well done.
So there's a motion and second on the table. Any further questions, comments, additional information needed, necessary? Okay, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so motion is carried. Next step will be a resolution that will come before the town board authorizing us to sign a contract with Revise subject to the review and approval by the town attorney.
30 weeks from now.
I'll give you a week.
All right. That is the last. There are no further action items and no information items. So no further business to come before the board.